Well. I have to call chief on that one right now.
How'd your, how'd your ride along go?
Oh, it was lame as always. Every time I hear a ride along, man, nothing happens. It's like, what the heck? I mean, it's like you should put me on patrol all the time because nothing ever has ever passed. We went, we went to Meadowbrook place. That was like the highlight of the evening. And then we stumbled found a guy who had a warrant, but he was at work at.
Todd's almost here too.
Edgerton. So Cole Point. He's like, where's Cole Point? I said, it's right over here. I do over pizza there all the time. So we go over there and, you know, we're driving by. There's a guy's car. So he runs the tag sure enough. So we call the county and they come get it at work. And I'm like, here again, you know, I wasn't a part of it, so it really doesn't count. So uneventful. So four hours and it was like 10:30. I'm like, take me home. Nothing's happening on a Saturday night, Gardner.
Chief, can you let him like scoop out the dog handles or something?
I clean things use this cage.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a weekly basement for that. So, yeah, I was pretty bummed. I was like, man. So I did get to go, not even above speed, but a couple times with the sirens. I mean, so that was one highway.
What about Todd? I walked nine miles.
Yeah, we saw, we kept seeing walking everywhere down. We're gonna have to get a bit of town just for me because it's like crossing the same area. People are gonna start going in. He's actually some guy stalking us, keeps walking around.
All right, well, we're going ahead and start it now. Hearing which is adventures and copy. Move on to the actual subject of the evening as our work session to discuss municipal broadband in our city. And we have a presentation that's gonna be taking place. And I believe that William Hadala is going to be giving the presentation on, pardon, I hope I said that right. From Spearpoint Consulting.
Cool.
You have it? Your floor.
Okay. So thank you, Mayor, for having us here tonight. My name is William Hadala and I am an advisor to Spearpoint and Associates. We're a 12-year-old veteran disabled owned organization. The founder, Mike Hansen, basically ran most of the military, marine and naval communications around the world for our forward warfighters. And when he left the military, started the organization. And currently they operate and manage networks around the world, specifically in countries like Japan for all of the military throughout Asia. Here in the U.S., we've done quite a bit of work in the enterprise space and our expertise is within construction management and telecommunications. Spearpoint brought me on board as a subject matter expert in regards to smart city and gigabit connectivity. So across the U.S., there's a lack of broadband, specifically within rural broadband communities, as well as outside of major metropolitan cities like Gardner. We've seen the claims of fame of the city of Kansas City and what broadband can do with gigabit speeds as their economic development engine is on fire and investment from around the world is coming into Kansas City. At the same time, when you look at Kansas City, Chattanooga, and others, Austin and so forth, the outside areas again are lacking broadband. When Google came into this marketplace, it was really to disrupt the industry, to say to the telecommunications providers, you can't provide high-speed, low-cost internet. It is not within the mandates of the major carriers to build these types of networks because they basically have networks where they give you the required amount of speed, what they deem is required at a certain price per month. And as a result, they're just kind of slow roll putting out this type of infrastructure. And right now, it's amazing within our generation since about 1995 to 2005, when the iPhone came out. Before the iPhone, we were starting to see a lot of smart city connectivity projects happening across the U.S. Places like Corpus Christi, Philadelphia and others, if you remember the old EarthLink networks. EarthLink was basically building broadband networks for utilities in major cities that were tying it back to their AMI, their smart meters. As a result, the fiber and wireless that they were building to be the connectivity for municipal broadband could have been used for the surrounding community, if not the residents and businesses. But the moment the iPhone came out, everything was hijacked when it came to municipal broadband because now all of a sudden we're focusing in on a phone and all the applications. And that's where we went from 2G to 3G to 4G and now 5G. When 4G first came out, it was a great way to get very high-speed connectivity to your phones. And as a result, companies like I used to work for, Clear, which got bought by Sprint, Clear was building wireless networks in the major cities across the United States. It was encouraging. You didn't have to have fiber optics or cable to your home anymore. You get a high-speed connectivity to your home and you could also put a little device in your laptop to basically give you the connectivity for, for your laptop to take anywhere, wherever that network was. But what wound up happening is new technology came out and again, now we're moving into a whole new realm of 5G. And now all of a sudden, the cities that had hoped that the carriers would build out the networks like they built out in Kansas City were gonna come here. It's not gonna happen. Do you know why 5G is coming? And what 5Gs are is are smaller antennas that get put across the city. And instead of a 4G tower like we have right here that's connecting to my phone or your phone that may be five, 10, 15 miles out there, 5G are gonna be these little cells that are anywhere from an eighth of a mile, quarter of a mile to a half a mile that are going to basically be shorter bursts, but extremely high speeds, which is great for the carriers. But it's gonna require a ton of fiber optics to those little antennas versus 4G, which was a tower with fiber and everyone got access. So the carriers are scrambling to figure out what cities are they gonna upgrade? So once again, they're focusing in on L.A., New York, Boston, all the major metropolitan areas, which leaves you in a situation like, what do we do? Now, I have heard the counter to that is, well, what about municipal broadband? Well, across the United States, it's kind of, it's whether you're in a state that allows it or you're in a state that prohibits it. I'm from Dallas, Texas. Texas, it's against the law for a municipality to offer internet services. They can own fiber networks for their own connectivity. They could lease the dark fiber, meaning the fibers that aren't used to carriers, but to offer services, it isn't, doesn't happen. At the same time, you have states like yourselves that can't offer services. But when you look at the success rates of municipalities being service providers, the percentage of success is low. And the reason being is you're a city that's mandated to run the operations of the city. The only one in here that really has, actually two people in this room that could really benefit from broadband connectivity is public safety. For your public safety video communications, you're seeing more and more of that, and your utility. But from our experience and experience of other consulting companies in this space, the bureaucracy within the cities prohibits these types of networks from going anywhere. You know, nobody, the right hand doesn't see what the left is doing. And then certain groups get brought in and they say, oh, you need to be a municipal broadband network, need to do feasibility study. Yeah, I call feasibility studies to death by consulting hour. They're never ending. I've yet to see a feasibility study that says you as a city need broadband that's ever gone anywhere or has never said, no, it is not feasible. And so we're at a point where you have to say to yourself, okay, if municipal broadband doesn't work and utilities are building broadband for their own needs and you have this Google, well, what does work? Well, the carrier model works. The problem is, is the carriers aren't gonna come to these small cities. And what I mean by the carrier model works is that the carriers, when they build networks in their backyards, they're not coming here asking for your permission to do it. They just do it. But the first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna go to the chief of police and the public safety and the utility and the city and say, if we build this network, would you be interested in using this network if we can offer you faster speeds at a lower cost? And if we do come to your community, we like to build it to your facilities versus somewhere nearby your facilities. And that's exactly what we're presenting today is a model where we're coming to you as a city saying Spearpoint Associates is investing in Gardner. We're gonna make that investment, but we're not asking you to do a feasibility study. We're not even asking you for any money. Rather, we're just saying, if we build this network, we want to make sure that it's built and designed and built, that the city could potentially use that. So I'm gonna go through a really basic presentation here that talks about the importance of broadband and the ability to provide not megabits but gigabit speeds. And I'll get into what that means for economic development, job creation and U.S. competitiveness. So the question a lot of people have is, what is a gigabit community? Basically, a gigabit committee, a gigabit community, it's 100 times faster than the average fixed high-speed internet connection. When you look at Kansas City, you're looking at speeds in excess of one gigabit per second. They're now gonna start upgrading that network to 10 gigabits per second. And you ask yourself, well, you know, how fast is that? And what does it mean to be a gigabit city? The mayor has shared with us as other clients that we've worked with in the past, that we want 100% coverage in our community. We want every rooftop, household and business to be connected. But that doesn't happen with just a waving of a lawn and say, everyone has internet connectivity. It's gotta be built in stages and we're gonna talk a little bit about that. Now, as you know, your city is fast-growing. There's a lot you wanna do within the business community. One of the mistakes we saw that Google Fiber made in Kansas City was as they went to the residential homes first. They went to all the multi-dwelling units. They went to the houses. They went to where the most people were to sign up. The model was flawed. A gigabit city model can only work if you have the municipal, the municipal users onboard the city, the utility and your key anchor tenants, which is your business community. And so when you take a look at Gardner and the areas that are growing, that you like to bring development, in order to attract those types of businesses, you're gonna need broadband connectivity, especially if you have Kansas City next door. When I could go over there, why would I wanna come here? Well, you got, I believe you have a little bit of a better quality of life living because you're a little bit more rural than you may be in a Kansas City. Though in time, I'm sure that will change. Now, for those of you in the room that are saying, what is a gigabit? You know, how much connectivity do I really, really need? And if you think about Netflix in your home and when you watch one Netflix and how often is it buffer and buffer and buffer, let alone you have one good connection, but now your kids are trying to watch in another room or somebody's trying to do, buffer, buffer, buffer. A gigabit is a thousand, it's 208 Netflix movies streaming in your home at once simultaneously. When you take a look at the uploading on the second, how much of a, how much a 60-minute video could you upload to YouTube in 10 minutes? Dial up, it's like 0%. Broadband is 20%, but with gigabit connectivity, you could do 222 in 10 minutes. That's, that's just incredible. And, and then as well as backup, which is important for businesses and what have you. But then you might ask yourself, well, why do I, why do I need all this connectivity? Well, it wasn't too long ago where the average user had 2.5 devices, a laptop, a tablet and a phone. For people like me who use technology a lot, and I'm sure either you are or you aren't or you know people that do, when I go into my Wi-Fi router at home, I look at how many devices are connected to that Wi-Fi router. In my house, it's 42. You say, how in the world can you have 42 devices? Well, I've got thermos sats, I've got lights, I've got computers, I've got televisions, I've got PlayStations, I've got Nintendo switches. You get where I'm going with that. And as time goes on, we're moving more into a bandwidth-intensive world, especially around video and video games. You know, the majority of traffic for the internet today is actually video. That's what's clogging the pipes. We need better throughput. When you start thinking about some of the things that are coming down line, you have more and more students learning at home. You have a lot of late learners like me going to college and completing advanced degrees, which requires video and connectivity. We're starting to see more and more medical diagnosis or medical treatment in the home. My medical insurance allows me to visit a doctor. If I don't wanna go in, I set up an appointment, he's alive. Rural healthcare is a big issue, especially with getting your aging generation to hospitals that in some cases may be far away. Got some great hospitals nearby. I don't think that's a big deal, but we're gonna start seeing more sensors within the home. When you think about what I just talked about, the Internet of Things, when you think about 3D printing, 3D printing's here. It's just a matter of time before the technology gets out there. For better or worse, we're saying 3D printing being done on things that maybe is a good thing or a bad thing, but on the same note, it's here. And especially the work at home capabilities. We have a number of communities in Texas and other places across the country. Bastrop is in Texas and it's right outside of Austin. And Austin is like Kansas City. It's a gigabit community. But in Bastrop, a lot of the business owners of tech companies live in Bastrop. It's a higher quality, but they gotta commute to work because there's no broadband out in Bastrop. So when you think about when I have to find a place to live, it may not necessarily be about, is it septic versus sewer or gas versus electric? Though my wife will tell you that gas is better than, you know, than electric. But for me, it's where, where am I gonna have that, that connectivity? As well as knowing that broadband actually increases the cost of homes in the long term. So increased property values actually means higher taxes for a city or tax, higher taxes to come in, higher type of tax, more taxes coming in based on higher values. When we start looking at the future workforce of tomorrow, especially this generation, you've got jobs that were never invented before. Data sciences, artificial intelligence, cryptocurrency, blockchain, it's here. This is what our kids want. And what we're seeing is if the communities don't have the connectivity that's required, the kids are going off to college and they're not coming back home. This kind of goes into some of the different aspects. Case studies, we talked about Chattanooga, Kansas City. I'm not gonna bore you with case studies of other cities. Giga University is really a next generation of university that we see right, right here in Kansas City that's paving the way. But beyond improving the lives of your citizens, it's all about the benefits to municipal government and services. When you start looking at public safety, sure, FirstNet is a system, a public safety broadband network that was originally supposed to be a network that the public safety community would own across the U.S. that a carrier didn't run. That was the original vision of FirstNet. Well, all of a sudden now ETNT is the administrator of FirstNet. And so ATNT says, well, we're gonna build 100% broadband, wireless and fiber for your constituents, you know, in the major cities. How long is it gonna take to get out here? But you as a public safety organization, you're putting more body cameras. And if you're not putting body cameras, you're gonna wanna put body cameras in the car and on the officers. And all of a sudden now, how do you backhaul that video every night? You know, watch guard video has a little video in the car with the DVR and then you pull up to the police station and there's a link from the car to the police station. And all of a sudden, you're storing everything on DVDs if you're not storing it on hard drives. And then those companies that wanna sell you the cameras say, well, we'll offer you cloud storage. Well, how good is cloud storage if you don't have connectivity to put it out onto the cloud? When you start looking at the utilities with AMI as a, as a city, you're looking at how do you have better utility automation? How do you get better quality of service, predictive analysis? How do you, how do you, how do you buy energy on a wholesale and give it to your end users? How do you, how do you have this utility infrastructure? It's all going IP, internet protocol, gone are the days of serial connections. And our greatest threat to national security is hackers getting into our electric grid and taking that down for any given period of time. When you start looking at transportation systems, I'm sure you like more cameras out there. I'm sure there's certain areas that have congestion with traffic flow. We're gonna start seeing more autonomous driving vehicles. When Kansas City starts putting those out there and there's some test cities out in this part of the way, how are you as a city gonna deal with that, with the connectivity of your vehicles? You're talking a lot of data that's gonna have to be going across infrastructure. And that's where we're presenting a model here where it's shared infrastructure. It's infrastructure where a private entity comes in and owns that network as a dark fiber provider, where we come in and work with the city to figure out if we build this network, where does it need to be? And at the same time, leasing that network to carriers who want to have access to that network. Now, it could be a P3, easily could be a P3, where the city provides certain contributions to the network. Perhaps it's right-of-way, perhaps it's pole attachment agreements, perhaps it's the chief saying that if you build this network, we'll use it, but what we like is we'd like to have cameras X, Y and Z. We would like to have backup and storage. That's all within the confines of what we're proposing here. So with that said, we have the ability to come in and design, build and maintain this network. There's not a one-size-fits-all. We want to hit what the mayor wants to hit with 100% coverage. And really, the next step here is beyond, we're not asking for permission to do this. Just like the carriers don't ask for permission, but what we're doing is coming and saying, we would like to work with you to figure out how to design this network and building a network that multiple carriers can use, as well as the city being able to use it for their own purposes. The next step is the ability to capture data. The ability to capture data is going to be key. And when I say capturing data, it's important to understand where all your different locations are. So we'll look at public safety, the utility, we'll look at the school districts, we'll look at your key businesses. And we're, we're in the process of starting that data gathering here. Then here that is with a company Packet Layer that we at Spearpoint want to work with to be that operator of that fiber network. But he and his team are about to go out and gather all this data, addresses, locations, who's your current provider, what's current speed? What are you currently paying? Are you using the cloud? Do you have data centers and so forth and et cetera? So once we have that data, what we're able to do is use that data, pulling this up here. Stand by. Bless you. This is for a network that was designed in deep east Texas council of governments. There's 22 council of governments in east Texas. It's the most underserved part of the state of Texas. Council of Governments oversee counties, counties oversee cities. And so what we were able to do is gather, it was $196 million to build this network. What we're able to identify was 300 community anchor tenants and where they were located to provide them the connectivity, what they need. So phase one is building the backhaul network. So what we're looking here is phase one. Where are all the cities' needs, schools' needs, utilities' needs? Where are those locations? We have a proposed backhaul network right now, but what we need to figure out is where are all the locations so we could design a network that hits those locations? And what we were able to do with only 300 community anchor tenants, then instead of giving them, who's the IT, besides the mayor, who's? The IT person?
Craig Adgeson.
Craig? Okay. So perhaps instead of giving you lit services, like in the Decog model, we give you a certain pairs of fiber. Let's say, okay, great, for all your city locations, if instead of entering into a three or five-year service level agreement or monthly recurring cost, rather let's look at what a 10-year IRU and the feasible right-of-use, and let's give you X number of pairs of fiber, right? So that's your network. If you want that lit, you can light it. But on the Decog model, we looked at two pairs of fiber to those 300 anchor institutions at the cost of about $5,000 each per month over 10 years, which was less money than they could build that for. But that offset three-quarters of the $196 million. And guess what? That backhaul network was close to, I think it was. Fifty-four thousand? There were 48,291 potential subscribers within 500 feet of the entire network. So you build a backhaul network, even if the city says, I don't want it. I don't want it as utility, I don't want it as a police. But if we were able to get enough anchor institutions on that backhaul, it's gonna be a certain number of subscribers. It's the intention here to build a hybrid network, a fiber and wireless network, where we have a municipal network throughout the city. Whoever wants to own it, operate it, that's, that's to be determined. But essentially, you have, yes, sir.
Sorry, William, I'm, when you turn away from the microphone.
Oh, my, okay. Sure, no problem. Oh, hello, world.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure they hear what you're saying.
So on a hybrid model, basically building a fiber wireless model. So instead of bringing fiber to the premise across the whole city, which is very expensive, as a rule of thumb to the finance directors, about $1,500 per residence, per home to do that last mile. Or rather, off that backhaul, we're able to do a hybrid wireless solution. And in those higher-density neighborhoods, start offering them services that are faster than what we're receiving. And as people start signing up, then bringing in them the fiber or the businesses or what have you. So all that being said, that is who we are. That is what we're proposing. The financial consideration is we at Spearpoint, pending the authorization of the city to allow us to collect this data, will do a market assessment at no cost. The data can be kept confidential. It's not being published. It's not being sold to third parties, but rather it's being used as a tool so we can start building a financial model like this. Once we gather all that data, we're now gonna take all this data and start populating it into like a spreadsheet that is up here. It basically shows you what are the different tasks that need to be done for a detailed design and engineering and construction? What are all the costs? And there's, and if I'm boring people here, I'm just gonna go a little bit nerdy here for a second, but you know, usually these networks, if it's a, if it's a $10 million network, $50 million network, a lot of people talk about take rates. Well, how, what percentage of take rates do we need to justify this network? Forget the take rates, throw the take rates out. I don't like take rates. And the reason being is the investors that will come in and pay for this network, they're gonna amortize this network over 10 to 20 years with a certain year. Take rates are based on what? A monthly contract, a yearly contract, a three-year contract? How am I gonna, how, who's, how is that debt going to be paid? But rather, we like looking at these models where it's either a IRU, X number of fibers per month, per mile, per strand plus O and M, or on this model here is basically cost per household passed and cost per household connected. And that is, and that, as, as you've started already, is a conversation with the carriers. The carriers don't wanna own these networks. That's why Crown Castle, American Tower and others are in business. They use shared infrastructure. It's the same thing with the fiber network, which is the exact model. So it's their willingness to say, I want in Gardner. You mean, I don't have to have the capital expense, but all I have to do is pay per household pass and household connected. So per that authorization of not Spearpoint, but of Packet Layer to get that data, Spearpoint will assimilate this information within the next X number of weeks. And sometime after, Memorial Day is May, Labor Day is September, afterwards will present a model with cost estimates, with an investment piece to it, which then can tie into what you wanna do long-term, sir, with the bonds and, and, and all that is fair, is all fair play. But right now, it's just a matter of collecting this data and Spearpoint here say, we would like to start it and charge the city $0 to complete it. That leaves you now with the Gardner model and citizen survey results and questions for me.
Questions? I have one big one and I, just a part-time nerd, so forgive me. When I, looking at my house, we have this gigabit fiber going or whatever into my house, do I have to upgrade? I mean, obviously, I think my router's not gonna be able to handle that, right? So we'd have to upgrade router, we'd have to upgrade like the connectivity between devices because some of the devices aren't gonna be able to handle that speed either, right? Because some of the devices aren't going to be able to handle that speed either, right? So is that?
So the net, so, so the way the networks are built right now is there's a device on your house called an optical network terminal, the ONT on your house. And the way that is designed, most likely your carrier, it's carrier specific. So you could have a carrier, like a model I'm proposing, where there's a fiber network through your community, and then allowing a carrier to tap into that flower pot in the front yard and bring the fiber to pigtail to your home, and then connect it to the ONT, to the device inside. What we're proposing in the network to be designed is really an open access network, a product like something like Nokia or others create. Where that optical network terminal in the house is carrier neutral. The future networks of tomorrow, which in Europe work really well, because Europe has different regulations with telecoms and the way they provide services, is that as time goes on, in the future, when I believe fiber will be considered utility, like gas, water, and electric, end users will just go to their website, the website, and basically authenticate the servers, the carrier they want, and switch services.
I understand, but like my ethernet card on my computer at home, I mean, is it?
No, it's all going to be the same. Because from the, from the connection on.
That's the bottleneck now, that, right? That's the bottleneck for the speed that I can transfer, right?
It's really, the bottleneck is from your home out to that network that most likely is what they call a GPON system or a cable system, that you're sharing the bandwidth with all your neighbors. And so when nobody's on that network, it's screaming fast. But then when everyone gets on, that's really where the bottleneck becomes.
All right, thank you.
So for the feasibility study, what exactly are you asking for from the city? Not money-wise, but?
The ability to collect data from your municipal, into municipality, your various end users, whether it be public safety, whether it be the utility, the various departments you have. And really, the questions that we're going to asking, we're asking are, who's your current carrier? What are the current costs? Where are those locations? Do you run, do you own your own fiber? If so, where? We're just collecting data points to build into a financial model. So if the city winds up, if the city has some fiber assets that we could potentially use in this network, why would we build it? We'd want to utilize the cities, a reverse IRU, we're leasing that fiber from you. But really, we're just collecting data to populate into a financial model to understand where does the fiber need to be built? Are these potential users? And if so, how much is the network going to cost? And then how do we offset those costs with a contractual dollar amount to utilize the service?
Don't we share some fiber with the school district? So we want to make sure that we're okay with, if we needed to use that.
Well, I think one of the entities they're going to be talking to is the school district.
They've already paid for their fiber.
That's, that's correct, that's correct. But if the school district is paid for their fiber and installed it, it might make some sense to augment their network with additional connectivity. And they may be willing to, to work with the city.
This is the network I, I noticed at the slide. I was talking about a financial model. What winds up happening is that we're able to take, when we, like the assessment piece, typically when we charge for this type of services, is what we're charging, you know, for the strategy sessions, collection of data to make ready work. But all that data will then go into what a detailed design and engineering looks like. And then we start building it out, our price per foot. But we're really just needing to understand the locations. And if there's a desire for the city to potentially use this network, and if so, beyond basic connectivity, what are the other uses that you would use it for?
And this is kind of going into the IOT or smart cities type of technologies that have been discussed already with this group. One of the things that they were discussing was, you know, having a smart cities data center in Gardner, for example, that could, you know, first, you know, manage the city's needs from that area, from that aspect. And then basically allowing whoever runs that data center may also be able to sell those services out to other communities or other entities that would want to have those kinds of technologies in their cities. And that would be a way to monetize the backhaul.
That's right. Essentially, it's a, the, the backhaul network can be paid by these community anchor tenants that would use it, that would need this type of connectivity. And then as we start building services on top of that, revenue could even potentially be coming back to the city through a P three. One of the things we're seeing are streetlight poles that are with small cells on them. And we're part of a group with Nokia that's designing streetlight poles that are in the city of Denver and XL Energy out on the west part of the country, whereby you have a streetlight with a camera on it. Conversion to LEDs, what percentage of your city are LED streetlights?
Working on it right now.
Okay. So as you know, when you go to LEDs, you get a dramatic cost savings. So in those cost savings, you can now have the ability to put cameras. But what if you could also have the LEDs and cameras? But instead of giving rights of way and pole attachment agreements to the carriers, what if the put on the streetlights for their small cells? What if there was a way to have those streetlight assets with carrier-neutral small cells? So when the carriers come to put their small cells, that's a revenue generator for the city, because they're utilizing your fiber and your streetlights. And that could be structured through a P three.
So what about the ones we already have agreements with, like Verizon? We just approved that, so they would use some of our electric poles. So what, what are we going to do about that agreement? Is that?
That you could still, that's still, that's still valid.
Okay.
Yep.
It's not like we're replacing their small cells.
And what we're seeing is that when this, when the carrier starts seeing that this type of work is being, is work is being done by the city, they typically will approach you and say, how can we actually work together? And so rather than giving one carrier the whole city, like we see in a franchise telecom days, but rather, a carrier's interested in a certain corridor. And they want to be the carrier in that, that area. But that's where, on this model here, we look at a cost per household pass, where they pay a certain amount of money to have the ability to provide services to that end user. And then once they sign up for service, then it's cost per connected household back, whether it be streetlights or what have you, your current exists, your current. Pole attachment agreements are valid, but in the areas where you do the retrofit, why wouldn't you want to capture that potential revenue? Especially if you are in a public-private partnership with an entity that has the investment capital to build it. And at the same time, we're both monetizing off of it at the same time. And you still maintain the ownership of that asset.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have, this all sounds great, but I've been around a little while and I've seen a lot of change in relatively short amount of time. I remember my first modem was a 14.4K modem.
Right.
It doesn't seem like it's that long ago. It quickly went from that to the next coolest thing was to get a 56K. I skipped the 28, I went right to the 56. But you know, I guess you know what I'm getting at. And all the data that you presented, I haven't seen that obsolescence curve or any kind of data to support the notion that, that fiber optic is going to be around long enough to, to have it paid for. I guess that's my question. What, you know, where do you see it going?
Well, we're starting to see, and I'm pulling up a, a slide right here. To your point, what you're seeing is more and more consensus to what you're saying. The cost to bring fiber to the premise is expensive. Whereas the wireless technology is becoming faster and more reliable. 5G is a perfect example of that. Unlike the wireless of the past, where you have point-to-point-to-point or point-to-multi-point using wireless backhaul, you're still going to need a fiber connection somewhere. And that's why these products, like I'm showing you here, this is actually Nokia's W-PON Passive Optical Network for Wireless Connectivity, is now, imagine you have on L7B, which is on the left of your screen, let's call that a fiber connection. And then the green line that goes from L7B to L5A to L6A to L7A is a point-to-point millimeter connection. That is, let's call it 1 gigabit per second per link. And then anywhere on L7A, when you look at the homes on L11B, L11, et cetera, all they need is a small subscriber unit on the house. And now you're able to give them 100 megabits per second or more. So we're starting to see wireless stepping up because of the small cell of what 5G is making possible. So with that said, that's where we see more of a hybrid solution. Instead of fiber to the premise everywhere, especially when you start looking at your socially disadvantaged areas, economic, social disadvantaged areas, where you have kids, I'm sure in your city, that can't do their homework at night, because they don't have connectivity.
I don't think that's the only reason they can't most times, is because they don't want to do it. But we would eliminate one excuse, I'm sure.
So now you look at Kansas City, and that's why you guys are in such, I'm excited about this project, because you're in the shadows of Kansas City. My wife is a native Texanite, John Neely Bryant family, blah, blah, blah. But I'm an LA boy, moved to Texas, and I would love to live in Kansas City, because it's, it's so exciting to be there. But you have all these amazing case studies that are happening, connecting for the good. What is connecting for the good? They went to Google and say, hey, Google, you got all this fiber near these, these areas that people don't have a lot of money, whether they're in mobile homes or in apartments or what have you. The fiber was provided, and so what did they do? They start providing wireless into those communities. So you're right in the shadows of all this. And fiber to the prem works to a certain extent. But we're starting to see superior wireless solutions. Fiber will never go away, it will always be that backhaul piece. But what you provide to your end user, yes, that's wireless can satisfy that.
The statement fiber will never go away is kind of interesting to me, because when I was a kid, I thought telephone lines would never go away.
Right.
Now, I don't have a hard line at my house. I have it for several years. So yeah, I kind of, I kind of wonder if that's really a true statement.
Well, I can tell you how it'll go away, if you're willing to let me entertain you. Quantum entanglement. So when you look at, when you look at quantum physics, right? Quantum physics in the sense of the ability to have quantum entanglements, where you have two qubits, that no matter where in the universe they may be, when one makes a state change, the state changes in another way. Another thing we're seeing is light, not LiDAR, but Li-Fi with light. We're moving into a world of light. I mean, light exists within our computers. We're moving in a world of liquid immersion versus air-cooled reduction in size. Before we get to a quantum state, we're still probably a good 10 to 15 years out. But at the same note, there could possibly be breakdews in that. So you're right, it could change. But for the near, for, for an investor in this, for 10 to 20 years, fiber is a safe investment, as long as you have the users to update, for that uptake on a monthly recurring basis.
Yeah, the other thing that's interesting to me is we spent all this money now to bring all of this technology into our homes, right into our wireless modem.
Router.
Our router. And then we route it to our devices that are capable of using the speeds that are coming into the router.
That's right. How much is enough, right? And that's why I was excited, when I worked for Clear, we were, we were all about YMAX versus LTE. And this is before LTE. I, I was, I felt like a rock star working for that, because it could have changed. We were so close to having an open access ubiquitous network that not one single carrier owned. But the carriers got involved, and once again, here we are now.
So just in layman's terms, five years from now. I do understand that a little bit, but the, the average homeowner, the average citizen in Gardner, five years from now, if everything proceeded forward, are they going, what is, what would their situation be? Are they, are they most likely getting wireless at that point?
I think you'll have, I think you'll have a combination of both. You'll have those areas of your city where fiber to the premise doesn't make sense. And you'll have a hybrid solution where they're at least getting 100 megabits or more, which is probably 10 to five times faster than what they currently have right now, which is why we want to gather this data. And then you'll have those fiber users as well. But for your community stakeholders, the city, the utility, your businesses, you're going to see primarily fiber usage. And part of this investment model is building out and then data center here. You guys can look up TMG Core, which is one of the portfolio companies that I started in January. We'll be on Fox News, I think, tomorrow. But that was a $77 million investment, part of a $125 million investment, bought a $150 million data center. In January, we took that facility to about a $50 million valuation in March, to a $100 million valuation today. That's how quickly we can move on this. But that data center, for what it's being used for the blockchain, using liquid immersion technology, there is about three quarters of that data center that's empty, where we have Digital Realty Trust coming in wanting to take down space. So when you look at a lot of these assets right now, there may be a shortfall on the monthly recurring revenue that comes in to offset the liability of the debt. But whereas if we build a state-of-the-art data center and we start integrating things like blockchain technology, as long as I can get low-pass power, right? And some concessions from the city, now all of a sudden, the blockchain technology not only underwrites the data center without having to have one tenant, it could also underwrite some of the infrastructure needed for these fiber networks. And that's the beautiful thing about things like the blockchain, whether people believe in Bitcoin or not. But those are the types of investments we want to make right here in Gardner. And I think that from a disaster recovery city on the banks of Kansas City, you're in a prime location, especially with the statewide fiber network. What we build in Gardner, we had a ability, Spearpoint has the ability to bid on that Kansas City RFP that just came out for Smart City. No one's touching it, even KPMG in Deloitte, it's too big of an opportunity. But we chose not to even be part of that with Gravir, who's a large distributor, because why? We want to plant our flag right here in Gardner, because you are a perfect proof of concept for every rural community across the US and for smart military bases that need to be upgraded for our troops around the world. So from that perspective, we're committed to doing this. It's just a matter of the authorization of the city to allow us to collect this data. And we are, we're a type of group that may or yes be yes or no be no. But let's get to, is this a justifiable investment sooner than later? Especially if all the risk is on us and the cost being incurred to gather the data to put this model together for the city, and giving the city the ability to have ownership in it in however creative way we can see possible.
I have another question. On this WPON, the, I guess the beaming there that does the Wi-Fi. There was a picture I saw, okay, so this is the deal that collects the signals. That's on a pole outside, I'm guessing, so it's, now, I don't know. I'm going to put my 10-12 hat on here for a second. Forgive me. I mean, what is the damage, the potential for, you know, a lot of 5G running around at, you know, at, at average home heights in a neighborhood? Because I mean, that's a lot of broadcasting. Normally, it's a lot higher up, I think, when it's on a cell tower. And so, you know, now it's focused in this one area. So has there been any research done on that?
On these units, you can see the.
I don't need any help getting crazier, so.
Yeah, if you see the form factor, it's fairly small. It could be built into the, what we call a NASL or a container on the streetlight pole, right?
Well, I'm just wondering about the actual, the amount of signal going out. Has there done any research on if that's affecting people, animals, that kind of stuff?
Well, I think that goes on to the ongoing debate of whether or not cellular is safe or not. But it's.
I don't know how much.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm 24/7, so stop for the speeding, that's it.
Sure.
So, but I just.
It's not using any type of crazy microwave, meaning nothing's going to fry you and not sitting in front of a satellite dish and you get fried.
Would you speak real quickly on something that we meant, that you talked to me about before? With having to do with the, with the spectrum, the gigabit spectrum that you're talking about from the standpoint of your spectrum that we're looking at potentially utilizing for a, for a wireless network. And there is, there's concerns about things like, you know, signal bleed and, and, you know. know.
Yeah, that's a good point. So we're huge proponents of licensed frequency versus unlicensed. Unlicensed frequency, you see a lot of I, a lot of wireless internet service providers using the 3.65. You have a lot of 2.4, you have a lot of 5.8. From inherently noise interference, there's a lot of that. I get that in my neighborhood where I'm conflicting my signal, my signal is conflicted with my neighbors and I have to change the channel. Whereas the technology that we're using for the mill wave technology is on the upper bands of like the six, 11 gigahertz on up, which is semi licensed, if that makes sense. And in these licensing agreements from point to point, they are registered with the FCC, which takes frequency coordination to make sure you're not interfering with other people. And on that last mile piece, we're involved in a project right now where we're bidding on a project for Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative, which is a number of county Smeco out on the East Coast. And we're going to be doing an LTE solution using the 3.5 gigahertz frequency. And the 3.5 is cool because you have to be a community anchor tenant to use that frequency. But on the same note, what excites me about this project even more is that in Overland Park, you've got Sprint. My former employer, people were starting to engage and work again on an IoT Internet of Things. They're using 2 dot, they own that 2.5 gigahertz frequency, which is the educational broadband spectrum. So when Craig McCob built Nextel and then Clear, he ran to all of the regions who own that frequencies and basically said, how would you like school books and computers? And they said, what do you want from us? He goes, that 2.5 gigahertz frequency, I want that. He doesn't just control that frequency in just big cities, it's across rural America. I was involved in a project that I built the statewide network in Oklahoma. I got that 2.5 gigahertz frequency, a licensed frequency. It was 30 megahertz for like $60,000 for a 30 year term. So when you hear about Sprint really wanting to get into IoT in your backyard, there is a ton of that we could be potentially using. So to that point, we're really looking at this from a licensed frequency perspective to the end user, whether it be leasing spectrum, purchasing spectrum. So that I think that addresses your point.
Yeah, and also the potential partnership opportunity.
It's great, especially the streetlights, the camera systems, the utility automation with the AMI piece. Because if they don't use it, they're going to lose it.
So Spearpoint wants to put in the network and coordinate with the city and whatnot. But then there's only maintenance from your standpoint, right? Then you're leasing it off the service providers. Do we have any indication from service providers in the area that they even want to do this? Do we have somebody who says, hey, if you build it, we'll jump on it?
And that's part of the due diligence. In order for us to approach those carriers, which some have been approached and there is initial interest on that, we need to understand how big is this network going to be as far as a cost perspective. And so then when we amortize the costs like over 10 years and build in a certain amount of yield and figure out how much is it going to cost to give it to a carrier, there is interest. But getting driving down into an actual IRU, we're a little bit premature, which is why the gathering of this data is so important. But Spearpoint will design it, build it and operate it like the O and M, just like we'll do with our network in Japan for the military throughout Asia. But we will contract with a company like Packet Layer, who will basically be that wholesale carrier. So when other carriers want to sign up to be retail providers, there'll be coordination between the two. But at the same time, no, at the end of the term of the 10 year amortization or whatever that term may be, we are open to having contractual language where the city potentially purchases that asset from us or it gets turned over to the city to be treated as a utility, right? And then all of a sudden, it's a relationship between the city and Spearpoint on the ownership of that network and the revenues that come off of it.
Real quick, we've talked about the first two phases. What we've discussed here is the third phase is a combination of different approaches, the hybrid, if you will. The wireless on one side for those who moving in, wireless will be available throughout the entire community pretty much when the backhaul is done, because we're going to put wireless points or there goes wireless points on on most of the poles out there. So folks will be able to get the 100 gig, 100 megabits, I'm sorry, connectivity on the wireless. Or if they choose to get true gigabit, they could contract through a CID, for example, to get that to their home. But it's going to be up to the person or the homeowner, the business owner, who wants to help with that.
What's a CID?
So basically CID is when the city votes that they want fiber. But the problem is, is what happens if you get a majority of people, but those majority of people live all across the city? And that's your lead in, oh, we're going to build it. It doesn't make sense from a fiscal perspective. But whereas if you build the backhaul network and it's built to community anchor tenants and then you start building the fiber and wireless hybrid, and now all of a sudden there's mass adoption of this, now potentially you could have a CID to those key areas versus just a citywide network.
So real quick, let me see if I understand this. Right now, it looks like like we have 100 megabits or a gigabit, that there's like not in between. Because the wireless is 100, right?
Wireless is 100 minimum, but as the wireless technology gets better, you'll probably see higher speeds.
So what we're looking at here is on the fiber to the prem play will be at one gigabit or more speed on a residential side, $100 or less and somewhere 300 to $500 per month for a business.
And that's to service the entire business.
Right. So considering that you have your commercial anchor tenants at that cost, and then you do find that you have scale across the city, you're going to charge the residents a CID tax, plus you're going to charge them about $2,000. It's going to be amortized across a number of years?
The CID is on phase, so that the CID.
I understand, wrapping them all up, sir.
So yeah, CID is probably five to 10 years out. So, right.
Nonetheless.
Yep.
And so you're going to have $2,000 amortized over a couple of years to the homeowner, plus $100 a month, bear with me, sir, plus $100 a month for the speed, is that correct? For the delivery?
So right now, outside of the CID, I can hit the CID on phase three, but really right now, the phase one is to build the backhaul network, entering into contracts with community stakeholders, either a certain number of strands of fiber, we give them the fiber or we provide the lit services. At the same time, providing services to key businesses, right? Phase two will be a hybrid solution as we start offering connectivity to your residents. It'll start off wireless. Now, if there's a certain neighborhood that the take rates are 50, 60, 70%, at which point we say it makes sense for us to build fiber into this neighborhood, at which point we would then be taking a, call it a $1,500 cost per home and amortizing it to the cost of over X number of years, right? But offsetting those costs by a subscriber fee that's $100 or less for the residents to have gigabit speeds. Now, in the case of the CID, if your city decides to do that, the CID is a wonderful way to say, hey, listen, we have residents across the city that now get it, they want it, we can do a citywide network, you potentially pass that and the monies you on that tax potentially provide an exit to us as the owners of that network and flip that asset back to the city or to the city.
And the CID is based on the scale though, correct?
This, yeah, the CID would really be take rates.
The CID is based on scale, because if you don't have the scale, you don't have the CID.
That's correct, yes, sir. But we don't require the CID.
And back to what you also said, sir, you said the city is mandated to run the city. I really appreciated that comment because I think there's a lot of truth to it. And I, I need to see the numbers, I need to see more than PowerPoints. I mean, I'll look at PowerPoints all day, every day. And I get the whole quantum physics, perhaps I need to study a little bit more. But when it comes down to the folks that I live near, I think it comes down to money and then it comes down to speed or delivery. And that's, that's the hurdle I'm trying to get over here. Because when, when you say we're mandated to run the city, we have a regional project at I-35 in Gardner Road that we're working on diligently. We have a water situation currently that we need to look at Plan B and C down the road. And I get we're in the 21st century. I'm with Councilman Moore, I remember 1,500 modems and Commodore 64s with two tape drives and all kinds of fun stuff. And I get we're growing, right? But I think that we're just a little ahead of what the city needs now versus what it's going to need in 10 to 15 years. That's just my opinion. And I think the numbers will prove it. We'll look at the data, it's not an emotional thing for me, but we'll look at the data and look at the numbers and understand what the surveys say. And I think there needs to be more surveys that go out with clear information about $2,000 per house, CID's, all this stuff wrapped up in a nice little package so that the voters understand and can lobby, if you will, the five of us that have a vote as to whether this is something that they're interested in. Because when I see Google leave the metro, I wonder why we're talking about this.
Right. Right, and that's why we're saying that rather than talk about you need to be a gigabit city and charter all this, rather, we see that there's a real need with the community stakeholders in the sense of your business community, number one. And most importantly, there may be a compelling cost benefit analysis for the city, the utility and others to participate in something like this. And that's what we're proposing at this time is that in order for us to feel comfortable making that potential investment, we just want to make sure that your city truly is ready. And if so, that's really phase one. And then phase two is bringing in the right service providers that leverage the network we potentially own together to provide those wireless fiber services. But it should not, I'm in a total agreement, it should not just be, oh, it's just be a gigabit city, because you're right, why did Google pull out? And the reason being is they went after the residents first when they should have been going after the community anchor institutions that have the most need for that type of bandwidth.
And I totally support your due diligence. I totally support the fact that you're learning, you know, from others' mistakes and they become best known methods. I get all that stuff, but I really think we need to boil it down to layman's terms and let our community understand the pros and cons, one being cost and how that, you know, how that works. I mean, if I left my home and sold it and I hadn't paid my $2,000 off, am I going to have a, a, help me, mayor, what's the word? A lien on my house because I haven't paid that off? So now it's going to transfer over according to Councilman Melton and that's going to affect the sellability of my home when you're telling me that having a gigabyte service in my home is going to increase my value. So I mean, all those things need to be flushed out and I think that's a part of due diligence. I think that's what we're all doing. I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. And the action items to that, to that council and as well as mayor and everyone else is the authorization to collect data, understanding that the data that is being collected, there are certain safeguards to who we're sharing that data with. And then that data will then start populating these financial models that, at which point we'd like to come back to present to the city. But beyond a presentation, then a sit down with various stakeholders to go through if it does make sense contractually, what does that look like on behalf of all parties? And that's all we're asking for today is the ability to collect data.
Will that cost anything to the city?
No.
If we scroll down the Gardner model, I think there's options for the third, for the last one. There's many options for the last one, it's not just, not just a CID if that's not the will of the governing body to go in that direction. But we will, that's always what we've been unpacked.
I'm the nice guy when the investment guys come in, that's where this thing and gentlemen like this as well, that's where, yeah, this is nice to have go out the window. It's really going to become a financial consideration on all parties involved.
So is the question before the council tonight to authorize? Authorize? If that's the question that we're going to try to get consensus for, what I want to know for consensus purposes and for my own, you know, whether I say yes or no to this, I'd like to hear from staff as to what kind of impact they would anticipate. Or even you may even speak to that, what kind of impact this would have on your daily operations? Is it going to be interfering? Is it kind of a passive sort of data collection?
Yeah, very, very easy. So we were just talking about that, really a three phased approach is it's the invitation to, A, it's authorization when we pick up the phone and say, hi, Lee, we're doing a study for fiber wireless connectivity in the city. Instead of saying, well, who are you? I've been instructed by the city council to, I want to make best use of your time. I'd like to send you a link with several questions to answer. Can I have your email address? We send that link out to online survey, which is then followed up with, can I spend 15 to 20 minutes with you going through these results to understand your answers? Or if you need my help with that, then that's really it.
So it's data collection, not just of city departments, it's data collection of individuals and businesses within the city?
So phase two of this, in tandem, tomorrow, the team has a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, which they'll.
Now I know why Jason's here.
Which they'll.
Hi, Jason.
I'm here as an interested party.
Oh, okay.
Which, which they'll initiate the same thing, the most likely be a cup, like a community stakeholder luncheon where we like to invite everyone in, give a similar presentation and at which point we give the opportunity to, okay, if we do build this, where is it needed?
So I read the council, the packet of information, Councilman Moore, and I don't know that our legal team has even looked at it because you're going to waive, this is my opinion, you're going to waive certain things by signing that document, whether that be residents, commercial or municipal entities. But I don't know.
What document are you mentioning, are you referring to?
The one that he's wanting all of, he's wanting to exercise in order for us to, whatever we, if we agree to this and the document that he'll utilize to exercise this survey, to my knowledge, it hadn't been, and I had asked earlier, it hadn't been authorized or reviewed by legal counsel. Are you pulling that up, sir?
Yeah, I'm trying to, all it really is, is a, it's just, it's a basic declaration. I don't have it handy here, but really just this is a basic declaration saying that we as a city of Gardner are looking at broadband type solutions for the city and we hereby authorize X, Y, and Z to have conversations with various city departments. That's really all it is that you're authorizing, that we're working together to potentially enter into a P3.
So what protections are you talking about?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't have a physical document. It really could be as simple as the city council saying, yeah, let's explore this. And the mayor saying, I authorize it and sending an email to, oh, we need to speak to.
Cheryl, could you expound as you and I spoke about this?
Yeah, there was a packet of material sent to the governing body.
This right here, these questions?
That indicated that staff was following up with legal counsel based on some of the questions that are being asked. Some of it based on the statutes. We're not able to release without the governing body coming to a consensus to waiving that. So we would need a meeting with action to provide waiver of some of those items. And I do know that the clerk spoke with MVP attorney today on it as well, so you might allow her an opportunity to weigh in.
Yes, I spoke with Chuck Dunleay from MVP about this this afternoon. We had a pretty extensive conversation, but he did want to have the opportunity to review the questions, review the Cora statutes and write an opinion. There are some questions in here that if this were a Cora request, it would be exempt from disclosure under Cora. If you waive the exemption, there is a possibility that it then becomes open record. Some of these are security concerns, which you may not want to have as open records that are available to anyone. Chuck did indicate that there is a possibility that we could create a non-disclosure or something like that, but he's not even sure that that would still cover it from becoming open record when we don't have an MOU or any sort of formal contract with the company. So you might want to consider very carefully if some of these are things you would want to have be open public records, such as the locations of your server room, different things like that that are covered by Cora as exemptions for security and other reasons.
And I had that written down here, sir, so this isn't something that's new, it's something that I. something that I asked when that document came out via email.
So are we saying we're not going to move on that?
Yeah, I knew that we tabled until it's reviewed.
And just wait until whenever we have a regular meeting?
I know we do.
And what I can do beforehand is I can send over a sample resolution that could be passed, and the contractual non-disclosure, make dollar for a quarter, you know, services for a quarter. I don't, you know what I mean?
It's less about money for me. It's just more about security.
That's correct.
And to Amy's point, there's just certain information that would become public information from a security risk.
So what I can do is, this outside of my pay grade, within the organization, I can most likely have, like Mike Hanson, our CEO, confer with whoever. I know that organization has top-secret clearance with the U.S. military and federal governments who are working on top-secret skits, things like that. So Mike just wanted to make sure that we're...
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
But this would be ultimately up to the company themselves if they want to volunteer that information, correct? Or are you saying some of this information might?
It'd be from us.
Internally.
Yeah, if I asked the chief about his data centers and storage and backup and things were...
Things that we wouldn't want bad guys to know.
Right.
Thank you. The correspondences themselves could potentially be cored, and if we do, once they, once that stuff gets cored, they might be compelled to release.
What's the earliest this could be shaken out? Fully vetted so we can...
So Mr. Dunley indicated he would try to get a legal opinion before next Monday's meeting, but I may need to get in touch with you, sir, and get a list of the exact questions and information that you'll need so that we can determine which would be exempt under Cora statutes, so that we're not inadvertently opening a closed record for public viewing. Because it's not just the correspondence that you were speaking to. If we open a closed record or a record that we can close under an exemption, then it is an open record from that point forward if the governing body chooses to open it. So we just need to see a list of the exact contents and information that you'll be needing so that we're knowing what records we would be opening if we do choose to exempt that, and what kind of implications that can have. And MVP can work to create an agreement or a non-disclosure agreement and give you some options for potentially opening those records.
Okay.
Are there any other asks for consensus for this meeting?
The only other ask I'd like to see is some real numbers and understand what the scale is, what scale is necessary in order to build from the...
That's what they're trying to work on. That's what they're...
Yes.
They're working on that.
Well, that's what I want to see, that it's coming from the keystone, if you will, back out in a tentacle fashion.
I'm asking more, more along the lines, is there anything else that the body here needs to consider, deliberate on?
I think we were going to go over the citizen survey as part of this and just kind of get some, get some feedback from the surveys. And I believe that Amy or...
So do we have consensus then that pending legal review?
Yes.
That we want to go forward with the legal team figuring out if we want to have this information, collect. Do we want the data collection? Because I think that's the original question of that.
If they can't get the data collection, it stops this project.
I understand that. So do we have consensus for the data collection, pending legal making it usable?
I don't see a reason why not.
He's asking, we have to give consensus. I agree that, yes, we should look into it.
Yeah, I agree that if legal approves it, that we should collect the data. Agree.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I'd like to see what legal comes back with before I say I'm good with it.
Right, sure.
Well, no, we're just talking about the consensus.
I guess that whether or not to have legal work on.
Right.
Right. And if it's dead in the water, no reason to have one.
Yeah. I'm just, I want to make sure I'm clear that I'm not ready to make a decision on whether or not to say yes or no to the data collection until after I hear exactly what the legal review says.
Here we go.
And then we can all deliberate the pros and cons of that, and then we can decide data collection or no data collection.
Agreed.
Right.
We're working, I'll get that for you.
Do we want to go through the survey results at this point?
And I get, good, done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
That was very, very good presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Glad we got to talk about quantum mechanics, too.
Yeah, you don't get to squeeze that out of your mouth.
No.
You had to perk it up.
hosted on Survey Monkey and advertised on the City of Gardner's website and sent out via social media and Constant Contact. The survey consisted of 10 questions and was open for a total of 22 days from the morning of April 18th, 2018, through the evening of May 9th, 2018, and received a total of 1,349 responses. There are some things to bear in mind for context as we walk through a quick overview of the results of this survey. The survey was conducted for the purpose of gathering broad information from anyone who wished to participate. No attempt was made to reach a specific audience or to target specific individuals with a request for information. This survey was initially created at Mayor Shute's direction when the project was in a far less developed stage than it is currently, and several different possibilities for moving forward were still being explored. This, combined with the aforementioned goal of gathering broad information, may help to provide some context for the seemingly broad nature of the questions. All 1,349 survey respondents answered the first question in the survey, are you a Gardner resident? 96.66% of respondents indicated they were residents of the City of Gardner, while the remaining 45 respondents indicated that they were not Gardner residents. All 1,349 survey respondents also answered the second question in the survey, do you currently have internet service? 97.48% indicated they currently have internet service, while the remaining 2.52% indicated they do not currently have internet service.
Just an online poll, right? Just to figure it out.
Taking it to my bird.
Thank you. That's why we keep him around.
Question three, if yes, how much do you currently pay for internet service, was answered by 1,151 of the survey respondents, or 85.32%. 75.76% of these respondents in total indicated that they currently pay between $40 and $80 per month for internet, while 7.99% currently pay $20 to $40 monthly, and 16.25% currently pay between $80 and $100 each month. Question four, what type of internet service do you currently use? Check all that apply, was answered by 1,153 respondents, or 85.47%. As this question allowed respondents to choose multiple responses, there were 1,179 individual responses, which is 26 more than respondents. This is why the total number of responses equals more than 100%, as you will see. 76.93% indicated they currently use cable internet service, an additional 20.21% currently use DSL, 1.13% of respondents currently use fiber internet, and the balance use other forms of service, including dial-up and ISDN. Question five, are you satisfied with your current service, was answered by 1,159 survey respondents, or 85.92%. So you can see there's a steady about 85% response rate for most of the questions. 41.85% indicated they were satisfied with their current service, while 58.15% indicated they were not satisfied with their current service. Question six, are you interested in having fiber internet service, was answered by 1,187 respondents, or 87.99%. 83.99% of these indicated they are interested in fiber internet service, while 16.01% indicated they were not interested in fiber internet service. Question seven was, do you agree that the City of Gardner should pursue a city-owned fiber optic network? This was answered by 1,185 survey respondents, or 87.84% of the total respondents. 70.89% of these indicated they are interested in the city pursuing a city-owned fiber optic network, while 29.11% indicated they're not interested in this Of the 1,349 total respondents, 84.28% responded to question eight. The question's a little long. I've kind of condensed it on the slide here, but the total question was, financing this infrastructure will likely require a contractual commitment between the city and the property owner for a payment or financing of an upfront infrastructure slash connection cost to install fiber to the property. How much would you be willing to pay or finance for this upfront infrastructure or connection cost? This question offered three set responses, up to $3,000, up to $4,000, and up to $5,000. This question also offered respondents the option to fill in their own response. It should be noted that respondents could not both select a set answer and fill in a response. 272 of the question eight respondents, or 23.92%, used a set response answer, while the remaining 76.08% provided a verbatim response. In order to perform a more comprehensive review of what individuals may be willing to pay, staff has analyzed both the verbatim and set answer responses. Please note that some of the verbatim responses received did not contain a numerical value. Verbatim responses of zero and/or not containing a numerical value are included in an upcoming slide. Verbatim responses containing a numerical value have been included in the categories you see above. The blue columns represent the number of respondents indicating they're willing to pay the amount listed below the column or more for installation, while the yellow columns indicate that the respondents are willing to pay that amount, specific amount, for installation. As you can see, 52.33% of question eight respondents are willing to pay $1 or more for installation of fiber. We'll discuss the remaining 47.67% of respondents on the following slide. This slide provides information regarding the remaining 47.67% of respondents that wasn't included on the bar graph reviewed during the previous slide. 31.31% of question eight respondents indicated they're not willing to pay upfront costs for installation. An additional 16.36% of question eight respondents provided a non-numerical response, such as need more information, I rent my home, and not this much, an unspecified amount less than the set answer responses. In the interest of brevity, staff has elected not to include the detailed breakdown of these responses. As discussed in the previous slide, the remaining 52.33% of question eight respondents are willing to pay an upfront cost. Please note these categories are more condensed than they were in the bar graph on the previous slide, but contain numerically identical information when compared. Question nine, in addition to upfront costs, how much are you willing to pay per month, was answered by 1,099 survey respondents, or 81.47%. 40.95% of these respondents indicated they're willing to pay an amount of up to $40, while an additional 38.31% indicated they were willing to pay up to $60. The remaining 20.75% indicated they were willing to pay an amount between $61 and $100. In respect of your time, the responses to question 10, please provide any additional comments in the space below, have been omitted from this presentation. In the spirit of full transparency, this has simply been a synopsis of the information collected from the survey. More information is available, such as the detailed verbatim responses for question eight, which were only summarized in the presentation, and the 515 verbatim responses to question 10's request for additional comments. The full results of the survey, including verbatim responses, can be distributed to the governing body at your request.
Yeah, I think we'll need that.
Okay.
PDF.
You'll get what I have.
No, I won't print a PDF.
There was something on the order of 700 individual responses. You'll see somewhat of a common theme in those. So, yeah. Something on the, on the, okay, one, one sentence.
I figured it was going to be like, that's Team Shute's crazy.
Yeah, no, no, none of those, none of those. No, that's just your...
Lucky you.
And 78% of them talked about $40 to $60 per month.
On monthly fee for service.
Again, we need to see their numbers. I'm not trying to get ahead of my skis here, but...
Monthly fee for service.
Yeah. And we only sampled about 5% of our community. So I'd like to understand how we could get more of our community involved if this program is going to involve the entire community.
Well, I think one of the things is when we get this information, it'll be easier because then, I mean, I was looking at it when I don't even know enough.
Yeah, but this information's not talking to the community this first way.
Let's put it this way, sampling the entire community, other than knocking on doors, and distributing and distributing, you know, questions, I mean...
That's not exactly true. Because we could have a town hall like we did with the Gulf Corps.
Well, that's correct. We don't have...
We can do multiple town halls within the communities and partner with the precinct committee man. I mean, there's ways to do it, sir.
Well, but I'm saying, when they come back with their information, then we could have town halls saying, you know, here's the information we have on what we think it's going to cost.
One interesting thing to ponder also is, is what level of knowledge do the respondents have as to exactly what fiber internet means? What is it? And what, you know, because Google's done a fantastic job of marketing it as this wonderful solve-all-your-problems kind of cool thing. It's the next newest, greatest, awesome thing to have. And if you go out and with that marketing campaign, you don't tell them what it really is, and they don't understand, you know, and you take a survey, sure, that sounds like a good thing to have. It's the latest and greatest, coolest thing, but they don't have a full understanding of how it can impact their life at all. I mean, I know in my house, I can't use that level of service at all. And my, you know, I've got kids and gaming and everything else, and, you know, we use whatever Time Warner Spectrum Internet provides, and it works fine. And so, you know, I'm curious to know what the average level of knowledge is for folks in this particular technology. Should we adjourn?
Well...
We want to look at number four before we leave?
Number four.
Financial considerations.
Financial considerations. Right. I thought we covered some of that.
I think we already have, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
Sure.
Is that why Tyler's here from Bond Cancel?
That's kind of what we have.
Okay.
So to the point of the survey, the takeaway was is that even though it was only 5% of the survey results, the majority is willing to pay $500 or less for connectivity at home. But on the financial consideration, I think that once, once we gather the data and build a financial model, we'll be able to understand the impact of what it will cost to build out a complete network to the entire city. But at the same note, to the financial considerations, there could be ways to offset those costs, especially with like AMI meters, smart meters, and the network you're going to need to build out across that city where a lot of the cost can be absorbed into the underlying infrastructure to build that. But really, it's the economic impact. But at the same note, as much as we love to do a CI, it's really not what we're proposing at this point. It really is building a backhaul network from an economic development perspective that can be used for the city.
So we do have Tyler from Cutec Rock. We actually had some discussions about some financing options that we might fully use the context of the number of 3P.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know that I have much to add to the discussion at this point, to what's already been addressed with respect to CID's for the so-called dirt mile, sort of getting fiber to the home or getting wireless, sort of in sort of a more localized fashion to the home. That is just, the CID model is just one tool that we could use to look at, sort of... to the home or getting wireless, sort of in sort of a more localized fashion to the home. That is just, the CID model is just one tool that we could use to look at, sort of how to finance this once the project itself and what the different phases are comes more clearly into focus. So we could look at CID's to deploy parts of this network to specific areas or neighborhoods or subdivisions. Another tool that we've talked about is IRBs, and that's kind of a more open question at this point, because is this project utility, is it not? Is it personal property, is it real property? It's sort of a hybrid and falls into a lot of different categories, and without knowing at this point what the project looks like in sort of a detailed fashion, it's hard to plug that in to a financial tool. So we're looking at options, but I think at this point, we're really looking for more clarity before we can weigh in on suggestions of how this might work.
I agree. All right. I think that's about it, unless anybody else has questions.
I have one question that just occurred to me for the gentleman, you being a Texas transplant, what, can you tell me about what Verizon did in Houston, Texas?
With Verizon One?
Yeah. I understand that was financed without taxpayer support.
Most of the networks that the carriers are, this model is that, is the same exact model.
Okay, so if I looked at that model, I could learn with respect to what you're proposing.
Yeah, a good example would be a carrier by the name of FiberLight in the state of Texas. They responded to an RFP that Verizon put out that said, "We have all these cell phone towers across the state, we need fiber backhaul to upgrade them so we can do with the things that we do on the phone." So FiberLight put in a bid, and they won that bid, and it was a $250 million network. So what they did is they built this network of 5,000-something miles across the street, and what they wound up doing is they kind of built it around the cities, through the cities, but at the end of the day, it got them the connectivity they needed for those cell phone towers. But Verizon didn't care about owning the network, they just wanted someone to build it, own it, operate it. Well, FiberLight immediately brought every carrier, AT&amp;T, SunLink, CenturyLink, they're all AT&amp;T, they're all using that network, because those carriers knew that it was a value, because they didn't have to spend the capital expenditures to do it. And then at the same time, smaller carriers like Ben's company and others were wireless internet service providers or doing that last mile piece. In the case of Verizon or Frontier, they typically build in these fiber networks without any cost being incurred. The difference here is that instead of calling it Verizon, we're calling it wholesale carrier, Spearpoint owns, operates the network, giving the city the ability to have some sort of revenue stream off of that network, there's concessions, uses, whatever it may be, and at the same time, wholesaling it to the carriers in your backyard, so instead of pissing them off, use my language, because you're building a network that they, you know, you're imposing your will on their service territories, you're building a superior network that they have the ability to provide services to, and as long as it's wholesale to them at a cost where they still are able to achieve the same margin or greater, the question becomes, why wouldn't they? Because there's plenty of people that with carriers that would love to do that, but we would like to still work with those incumbents without even incurring any dollars. But the same note, your utility director, how many meters are here in this, in this city?
8,000.
8,000? So a good example would be a network we built out for a co-op in the Panhandle that had 25,000 meters across the entire Panhandle of Oklahoma, and the network, let's call it, was a $10 million network, and so when you amortize it over 10 years, you had a payment of like $60,000 a month. And so one way to offset the cost was, well, can you offset those costs by, how many substations do you have? They had 49. How many substations have connectivity? Half of them. Of that connectivity you have, what is dial-up? How much are you spending on dial-up? $1,500 a month. What's the cost of not having connectivity? It's, there's no quantitative measure of that, because why? You know, not having that predictive analysis. So when we took the 49 substations, divided that into the $60,000 per month, we found that the cost per month per substation was $750 per month, which was less than what they're getting from the carrier. Took it a level deeper, we said, well, how many meters do we have? We have X number of meters. Divide the number of meters into the monthly payment per month, that comes out to be $1.50, $1.25 per month, right? Can that be absorbed into the rate case? Okay, let's take how many miles of line you have. My point is, is that a lot of this infrastructure can be offset by things that you have to do already that you know has a, and you can amortize a depreciation over seven years on meters as it is. Do you really want to own those meters? Or if you do want to own them, how do you use shared infrastructure that you don't have to incur all the costs of that backhaul wireless network, tying in some meters? So now when we do go to the residents who want it more than 5%, instead of incurring $1,500 per month, we know that utility's a major user on it, now we can get below that 500, and same thing with the police. How many places around the city do you need this type of connectivity? Even if it was $10 per month, what have you? But my point is, a lot of these costs can be offset, to your point on Verizon One, without collecting $1 from the city. And that's what this financial model would do, but we need to have the ability to engage with your community stakeholders in a way that, no different than if you were to publish an RFP or RFI, given us the data on how your city operates and the costs associated, so we can put together a complete solution.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
We'll give everybody back 20 minutes of everything, and we will call this meeting.
It's a moot.
Well, there's no really motion.
Let's do it.
No motion, but we'll, we'll, we'll end the work session. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming in and-
Thank you, guys.
Discussing this proposal?
You're welcome.
Thank you.